Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, October 21, 2024. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bell?
Here.
Councilman Bokey?
Here.
Councilman Brands, that is excused from this meeting. Councilman Laura Sala?
Here.
Councilman Pearson is excused from this meeting. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whelan?
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum. Thank you very much, all of you, for coming tonight. If you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor and recognition of our servicemen and women serving this great nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you for joining us tonight. It's great to see all of you here in the audience and our friends from the Boy Scouts. It's always good to see you. Welcome to those of you observing from home in a Zoom room or Zoom or YouTube opportunity. So, thank you for coming. On the agenda first tonight, we have Proclamations and Presentations, and the first is a Hazard Mitigation Plan Update with Serena Rotondo, our Emergency Management Coordinator with West Pierce Fire and Rescue.
I'll be talking about the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we are doing for the city of Lakewood in partnership with Pierce County. And so, the first thing is that this Hazard Mitigation Plan is a part of our family of plans for the West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition, and it is one of the plans that gets updated. We do this update every five years, and the biggest part of this plan is that we are using it to reduce the impacts of the hazards that are present in the city of Lakewood. So, there is federal regulation that requires local mitigation plans. The city of Lakewood may not be eligible for any federal mitigation funds or post-disaster grants unless we have a Hazard Mitigation Plan that is approved by the state of Washington and by FEMA. This local mitigation plan is a representation that the city of Lakewood is committing to reduce risks from natural hazards and proving that we have a system that we are utilizing to make decisions as we commit resources to reducing these hazards. We are working with Pierce County Department of Emergency Management. They have a multi-jurisdictional plan that has an addendum for each city, and so Lakewood will have their own addendum, and then both the plan and addendums are updated every five years and are put forth to be approved by city council. There are seven sections within the plan. The first section is the development process. One of the biggest things that I want to touch on with this section is that we do gather public comment and public outreach and education with this plan, and so here in this development process, we really talk about how we're doing that. One of the things that we've done this year to get public comment is that we have created a short article that we posted on the West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition website that talks about the Hazard Mitigation Process, what that looks like for Lakewood, University Place, and Stilicum, and in there, we have created a short survey for our community members to take that goes through their priorities with hazard mitigation, what that looks like, how familiar they are with the hazards in Lakewood, and how they are preparing for them, and that will really inform our process when we start to look at what mitigation measures we want to take here in Lakewood. Section two looks at the community profile. Every five years, we're really looking at population, demographics, infrastructure, the economic state here in Lakewood and how that changes, and making sure that we're making updates to that. Section three is the capability identification. This looks at the specific capabilities really relating to legal, technical, and fiscal. Section four is a risk assessment that we do. We look at those risks and hazards within the city of Lakewood and really using the community profile to figure out what that frequency of occurrence can be and then creating a vulnerability analysis, so making sure that we are prioritizing the hazards that our community members feel is important, and then making sure that we are also looking at those, the demographics and the infrastructure in Lakewood to make sure that we are prioritizing the things that we need to be doing. And then, section five, the mitigation strategy, specific measures to mitigate risk. This looks at all of the different mitigation projects that we want to do, and one thing that I want to point out with this is that we are not siloed in doing this just as emergency management. We want to make sure that we're bringing in the different departments in Lakewood that would be responsible for these mitigation updates and making sure that we are including everybody. And then, with that, we also talk about if it's an ongoing mitigation measure that we have, if it's a new one, if it's something from the previous plan that we have not yet completed, and some comments on that. Section six looks at infrastructure, so again, that hazard vulnerability to city-owned infrastructure, and then section seven is the maintenance part of the plan, so how we are going to implement this plan here in Lakewood, and then our capital improvement plan, land use, the city's comprehensive plan, and so that will go back to our comprehensive emergency management plan and how we are going to choose to bring this all together. I'll quickly go through the Hazard Mitigation Planning Process. We conduct a hazard identification and vulnerability assessment. We are actually doing this every year for each city within the coalition, and so we'll utilize all of that, everything that we've done the past five years, really add that up, and then making sure that we have those community profiles and those mitigation measures that we've been working on throughout the five years, what we want to continue to do and what new updates we have. We'll compile all of this information to create the Lakewood Addendum to the Region Five mitigation plan, and this happens, this is where we're really working very closely with Pierce County, and then each addendum will then go to the State Emergency Management Department and then FEMA Region X, which is our region, for pre-approval. After pre-approval is when we would take this plan back to you guys. The city's governing body would approve the resolution to adopt the plan, and then from there, we can start to do those mitigation measures, and then, again, reassess and create a new plan every five years. This is just an example of what one of the matrices looks like within our Hazard Mitigation Plan, so we really look at that mitigation measure, which jurisdiction or department is going to take the lead on that, the timeline, so if it's going to be something ongoing, if we want to have it completed within the next two years, and then Plan Goals really looks at, are we protecting life and property? Are we focusing on operations? Are we just looking at preparedness with this? And so, we can kind of keep ourselves on track here and show what this mitigation measure is going to do in the city of Lakewood. And this just continues on, this is the matrix from 2020 into 2025. And I know I went through that pretty quickly. Are there any questions on the Hazard Mitigation Plan process that we are going through right now?
Well, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Very thorough update. We appreciate it. Looks like there's good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda tonight is the Public Comment section of the evening's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or by email to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to our counsel electronically, but for transparency and for purposes of establishing our record, we ask the city clerk to read the name or names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
The city council received written comments in advance of the meeting from Jennifer Immelt, Tricia Parsons, Brian Parsons, and Robert Harrison.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that if you'd like to make public comment, that you line up at the dais, please state your name and residence for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes to speak, but we do ask that you keep your comments related to city business and speak to the council as a whole and not to any individual council member. Virtual comments are also authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the meeting room, please use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and myself and the city clerk will do our best to make sure that we see all hands raised and call upon them accordingly. So, there is a public hearing tonight for the vacation of a portion or a section of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest. That particular public hearing will be later in tonight's agenda, so if you have a comment related to that, I'd encourage you to save your comment or testimony to that portion of the agenda, and this time is for general public comment. So, the first individual on the public comment sign and sheet is Carla Richards.
First off, thank you all for serving our city. We appreciate all of your hard work. Again, my name is Carla Richards. I reside in Lakewood, Washington. Currently, I serve as a committee chair for the oldest troop in Lakewood, Troop 53, and I am accompanied by my husband Scoutmaster Jeff and our assistant scoutmasters. We have Anthony and Elliot, and we have committee members. We have Michelle, our treasurer, and Elizabeth, and our wonderful young scouts, who I'm very proud of, and they make our city proud. So, we are here working on citizenship and the community merit badge, and I would also like to thank Mr. Paul Bokey because he has helped us with this in the past. He has come to visit his troop, our troop, a couple times to be able to have some dialogue in regards to the meeting, if the scouts have any questions. So, that interaction has been really wonderful. But I would also like to applaud another council member, Justin Larcello. Thank you so much for your service to our city as an Eagle Scout, so we're very proud of you because he is one of our Eagle Scouts. So, that's a cool piece of history there. So, speaking of history, that is why I'm here, because the Troop 53, Boy Scout Troop, is the oldest troop in Lakewood. We are getting ready to celebrate our 100-year birthday on March 11, 2025. We are having a celebration on March 15, 2025. We may change the location in the future temporarily. Right now, it's scheduled for the ALCS, but we just recently moved to Thomas Middle School. We are meeting there on Monday night, so we may have it there, so we will keep you informed. But there is some cool history with this, with the troop. If you know Norton Clapp, I assume most of you do, he is responsible for the Lakewood Colonial Center, the first shopping mall west of the Mississippi. Guess what? He is one of our scoutmasters. So, he is also responsible for purchasing 10,000 acres of Mount Baldy Upfieldmont Scout Ranch, the largest youth camp in the world, so we have a stake in that camp as well, too. He is also one of the five investors responsible for making the Space Needle possible for the World's Fair. He served as BSA National President from 1973 to 1976, and he also served as a warehouser president as well, too, and he's done a lot for our community. So, we're pretty excited about the history. We do have the Hettla family involved in our charters. Our original charter actually has a Gagne family, and even fun fact, Bing Crosby's cousin Lloyd Crosby is in our original charter, which we have in our hands. So, it's pretty exciting. So, we're excited to share even more history at our celebration, and we're excited to learn more about Lakewood tonight, so it's an honor to be here and thank you for allowing us to be here as well, too, and be a part of this process.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Thank you to all of you for being here. I assume they're going to stay throughout the entire meeting?
Yeah. Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that. We will be exiting a few minutes before eight o'clock, so we will quietly make our exit, but we're sure honored to be here in the process until then.
Ah, very good. Okay. Well, thank you again for coming. Next, Hallie McCurdy.
My name is Hallie McCurdy, and I reside in Stanaway, but I feel like I spend more of my time here in Lakewood than I do at my own home. I'm representing Partners for Parks tonight, and I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of update on where we're at with our fundraising. As you know, we had our first public-facing event for the H Barn, which was the Hoedown on September 28. I'm proud to say we had almost 200 people in attendance at that event, and we raised $54,000 towards our goal. So, now where we sit towards our fundraising goal is $2.2 million of that $3.5 million. So, we are getting there. I feel like every, every day, we get a little bit closer. If you think back to the beginning of the year, we had just a little over a million, a little over a million dollars raised, and now we're at $2.2 million, so we really are making incredible progress towards our goals. I had the opportunity just last, just last Friday to attend the Tacoma South Rotary Event and, and spread awareness. I got to talk to over 100 people at their mini golf event, which is a really fun event, by the way, if you get a chance to, to do that. And about 50 to 60% of the people hadn't heard about our project yet, so it was really cool that I got to, to, to talk to folks who hadn't heard about it yet and spread the excitement and spread the energy. I will say that every person that I talked to was so excited that we were doing this, and I don't know if you guys have had a chance to talk to folks in the community about this project, but I highly recommend that you do because it's really something that people are excited about, and people want to see something done with that barn, and they want to see public events happen there, and, and I'm just really proud to be part of, of, of that organization, and I, I know we're gonna, we're gonna get it to the finish line. And I do want to thank those council members who attended the Hoedown. I really appreciate your guys' support and, and also your, your personal donations to this project mean a lot to us, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you all who are here for Partners for Parks. We appreciate you and the work you're doing in partnership with the city. Next is Eric Jurgensen.
Hi, I'm Eric Jurgensen, and I live in Lakewood on Superior Street, just a couple blocks from Lake Louise. I drive on a daily basis on Interlochen and also on Hipkins, and so Hipkins got a new sidewalk, and you, I can see that the sidewalk program, which, by the way, I'm not against sidewalks, and Hipkins needed sidewalks. Anybody who drove on it knew it needed sidewalks, so I want to say that upfront, but I'm here mainly to defend the trees and to help stop the city of Lakewood from killing old trees. It's a thing here, and what I mean by that is that trees that don't need to come down are very, very often taken down, and these are old trees, really, really old trees. And what's happening is on Interlochen, I can see that they're preparing to put sidewalks on Interlochen. Correct me if I'm wrong, and the reason I know, they used to put a large red X on the trees, and so I came to the meeting a couple months ago because they had Xed, or a few months ago now, they had Xed out the trees in the entrance into the park, into our park. There were five to seven, definitely five, old fir trees cut down to put a roundabout to get into a park. You know, come on, really? How, and, and the roundabout still could have been built, it just needed to be designed to save the trees, and, and it's the same thing on, it happened on Hipkins. On Hipkins, there were two very old oak trees, right where the new roundabout is. If you go there now, you'll find one, and there was a sister tree to that of equal size across it. Again, it did not need to come down. It's a matter of priorities, and I want, I have to say this, we need trees to protect the lakes. If the trees slow down the water, the biggest pollution in the lakes is runoff, and the trees slow down the water from going into the lakes, preventing the pollution of the lake. So, if you're a lake owner or you know somebody, we need to protect our trees, and so I'm just pleading with the mayor and the council to look at what's happening down there on Interlochen. They put a little red dot now. They used to put an X, but we came to these meetings, and I think they wanted to stop us from talking about it. They put a little red dot. Go down Interlochen and see all the trees that are about to come down, and the crazy thing is that some of them are not even where sidewalks will be, so I'm just, thank you.
Next is Nancy Brennan-Dubs.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Brennan-Dubs. I lived here in Lakewood, have for about 25 years now or more. I'm talking about, or what I'm bringing up tonight is regarding the Lakewood multifamily tax exemption program, which I'm still becoming familiar with, that I have been trying to review all the documents that have been put out. My main concerns are just a few at this point. One is the economic impact to the city due to the tax exemption and what this means for the city as well as for the Lakewood residents themselves who live here. Two, oops, I do understand the need for the city to increase the amount of affordable housing and housing in general, but what I don't understand is why the permanent rental housing is set at 50%, and which allows as for temporary housing, basically, for the other 50% of the buildings there, the units. That doesn't, that seems a little high from my perspective of trying to meet the needs of this community and for permanent housing. My last concern for now, because I'm still learning, but is the traffic impact. I do live in the Central Business District. There's already traffic there. The streets in that area, the city streets are very small for increased demand by traffic, so that really does concern me, as well as the lack of sidewalks for people to walk on. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, James Dunlop.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. As I think I've said before, local government is really complicated, and a lot of people don't really understand it. You know, when they study politics and government, they study central government, but it really matters and it affects people's lives, and I think one of the roles of a city, a city council should be to protect the residents and to look after residents' interests, but it does seem to me that there are things happening in Lakewood which seem to be totally against Lakewood's interests. You know, we recently had Dr. Mirjalili losing his house, and we could see that as just something one-off, eminent domain. We don't know about the, his, whether or not he owned the land on which was, was taken from him, that's still going through the courts, but that might be seen as an exception. Perhaps he didn't. I don't know. I think he did, as far as I can see. Maybe it was because he was from Iran, maybe it was because he was a Muslim. I don't know why, why this, you know, I think, as I've said, I didn't, I think if he'd been a retired white colonel in the, in the US Air Force, he wouldn't have been treated like that, but it's happening to other people. It's happening, we're seeing what's happening in, what's been planned in Lakewood. We've seen the destruction of a library. People's, where people live is being planned for destruction. Sometimes it is being destructed, it is being destroyed. It's very often, it's not, it's not about how much money you have. We've seen what's happened in Lakewood and Woodbrook. We always think that it's not, it's not happening to us, so we don't have to worry about it, but I think it is serious, and it sort of reminds me of, I don't know if it's a poem, the statement of when Martin Neomola, after the Second World War, he, I'm sure you've heard this, it's almost a bit of a, bit of a cliche, but I think it is relevant in terms of people's housing, you know, that famous thing, "First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." And I think that is what's happening to people in Lakewood. They're, they're where they live, whether they live in an apartment block or they have their own, own two-story house, everyone is at threat, and the question is, why? The city, the city of Lakewood City Council is supposed to represent the residents, and I think what's happening is that the city of, the council is actually representing the city bureaucracy and perhaps representing developers as well, and I think council members need to really consider who they represent, because right now, I don't think the city council is doing their job.
That's the last individual who's signed up to address counsel during the public comment period. If you haven't signed up, feel free, if you are here and interested in providing public comment on matters pertaining to city business.
Hello. Good evening to all of you. I'm Abraham Mirjalili from the city of Lakewood. I'm a resident here. I have been for over a decade. My discussion today is about what I learned through the last few city council session. It appears that this, the city is losing the, on the legality of private ownership here. They want to take like block of, like a block of parcels from private property owners and make it assumably to affordable housing. Well, that would, that, the idea is good to build more houses and be affordable. The way it's decided to be done is wrong and actually is principally wrong because it first undermines the private property ownership and the rights. Two, we don't know when these properties are taken over, who is handed to, to build them, and on the top of that, seems like this council and this city wants to tax these residents to pay and subsidize the building of those on the top of it. Where are we going on that? If, if these things are implemented, maybe some people, they have to work, and some people, they don't have to work, so some they can go and get affordable housing, so-called, and sit in it all day long, and somebody else working day and night just to pay taxes to subsidize it. This is not right. People who, who bought their property, working all of their life, suddenly come and say, "Oh, we want to make affordable housing. This is in this block. We take it away." Well, like they never owned it. What is the, what is the goal behind that? Who is benefiting from this? I don't think- I don't think even a lot of people who are going to live in those houses, if they knew that's the principle, they would want to live there, because they are honest people out there, that they do not want somebody else's property. They are not thieves. They may, they might be coming from a background that they were not fortunate, but they don't want to leave at the cost of others. This is not right. Thank you very much.
Are there any other individuals wishing to address counsel during the public comment period? Seeing none, we'll turn to those who are appearing virtually. And the first hand raised is that of Christina Minetti.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good evening, everybody. I'm Christina Minetti. I've lived in Lakewood since 1971. First of all, I'd like to say that Norton Clapp is actually the prime reason why we have such a strong tradition of redlining in Lakewood. If you don't know what that is, maybe people in the audience, those are the covenants that used to be made, preventing blacks from owning property. So if you look at the map that was published by University of Washington, I think it was last year, you can see very clearly that Lakewood is like a focus of redlining in our area, much more so than to the west or to the north. I have a number of concerns I'd like to draw your attention to this evening. First is the question of incentives for building affordable housing. I completely agree with the concept of incentives, and I think they could really be used very positively to strongly encourage developers to build where Lakewood needs help. That means all the empty expanses of weed-studded asphalt that dot the city. This would allow us to increase the housing while improving the city at the same time. We need larger-scale apartment buildings, like in Europe, instead of like trying to squeeze in houses everywhere and ruin already existing neighborhoods. You know, one big apartment building is much better than, you know, squeezing in a few houses onto somebody else, you know, onto existing lots. Incentives should not go to destroy already established historical neighborhoods, which our own comprehensive plan, used to say at least, should be preserved. In Chapter Three, Land Use, it said, quote, "That chapter accommodates growth while preserving the character of established neighborhoods and protecting them from intrusion of incompatible uses." Now, I was looking in the, I was trying to look in the new version, but apparently the link isn't working at the moment on the city website. So, but it seems to me that maybe this was taken out. I certainly don't hope so, because I hope you do care about preserving established neighborhoods and of course Lakewood's character. And what about all this development? Are there studies prepared that show that our infrastructure will support all these apartments, for example, across from Clever Park High School? What about the sewers? What about the water, especially if you have a contract or the district has a contract to sell to other jurisdictions for 20 years? What about the roads? Obviously, Gravel Lake Drive is not a super huge road that can accommodate, you know, very large amounts of traffic. So redevelop elsewhere, use already paved areas. And there's also, of course, environmental aspect of the area that we're talking about. It's a sensitive area. There are two salmon barren creeks. And there, there's also, of course, the lake, which is fish and salmon habitat. There's a sole source aquifer underneath us, of course, and this is simply not an appropriate site for such high-density development. I know that you've already rezoned it, but I think that that really needs to be reconsidered. Make incentives to direct it to more appropriate sites. I've, of course, been fearing for my own properties through all this, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's the last hand I see raised, but there are some other names up there. Will we give them a second, see if they raise or elect not to raise their hand? Well, seeing no additional hands raised, unless you see anyone pending on the phone. So I'll declare public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the regular agenda. Excuse me, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda. A, approval of minutes of the city council meeting of October 7th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of October 9th, 2024. C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of October 16th, 2024. D, motion number 2024-65, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Lakewood Water District for the construction of a water line along 88th Avenue Court Southwest and Wadsworth Street Southwest. E, motion number 2024-66, authorizing the execution of interlocal agreement with Lakewood Water District for construction of a water line along Nianza Road Southwest between Gravelly Lake Drive South and Gravelly Lake Drive North. F, motion number 2024-67, authorizing the execution of professional services agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $1,113,586 for services related to the Lakewood Station Improvement Plan. G, motion number 2024-68, appointing Nancy Cameron, Donald Doeman Jr., Adrienne Keltner, and reappointing Emily Feeling, Daryl Owens, Philip Brasky, and Adrienne Sarian to serve on the Lakewood Arts Commission through October 15th, 2027. H, motion number 2024-69, approving the 2025 to 2026 federal state and Pierce County Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, lodging tax advisory committee minutes of September 22nd, 2023. Two, planning commission meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2024. Three, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2024. Four, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of May 6th, 2024. Five, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2024. Six, planning commission meeting minutes of June 5th, 2024. Seven, planning commission meeting minutes of June 12th, 2024. Eight, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of August 7th, 2024. Nine, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024. Ten, planning commission meeting minutes of September 18th of 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Ma, second to my council member, Laura Sella, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. First up is public hearings and appeals, as I promised. This is the date set for the public hearing to consider the vacation of that section of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest. And for an overview, I'll call on our Public Works, one of our many engineers, but the finest, of course, Wes Dunott.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, members of the council. I have a very brief slide presentation, starting on page 186 in your packet, and that is, as you mentioned, concerning the hearing for the vacation of Klein Road Southwest. Thank you. So this was an owner-initiated vacation request. 80% of the owners abutting requested it. So I'm going to go over these at a high level in the following slides, the location, what they propose, the appraisal actions to date, and then at that time, you may choose to hold a hearing. So the location is just a little east of Bridgeport between I-5 and Pack Highway. So it's a section of road that's been gated off, a bit grown over, had some issues with garbage and other activities in that area, but it is city right-of-way. So the proposal for the 80% or for the abutting owners is to incorporate it into their parking area. It would still remain open. There is a sewer line running in it, so the easement would still be maintained in that area, so a building wouldn't be built there. Again, 80% of the abutting owners initiated this and a resolution was back on September 16th, setting up the process that we find ourselves at today. The appraisal came in at 95,000. It's for 17,454 square feet of property, and the appraisal's in the packet. So this is just a summary of actions to date. It was noticed properly to have a hearing this evening. Mailers, a substantial number of mailers were sent to adjoining owners, noticed in Tacoma News Tribune. We did have to receive public comment from two individuals in opposition. One was Amos Brinkley with the Bella I-5 Motorsports, and the second was Jennifer Hines, who represents the Nisqually Tribe. So at this point, if there are any questions, if not, it would be the appropriate time for the council to hold the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ott. Any questions? Council member Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ott. You mentioned that 80% of the abutting property ownership is for this. Is there, by statute, a percentage requirement that it has to be above?
Yes, 50%.
Okay. Thank you.
And my follow-up question is, if 80% wished to vacate and, after the public hearing, and should council elect to adopt the vacation request, what happens to the other 20%? They don't share in, in the vacation, or they just don't pay for it?
Well, that's a very good question, and I may ask a little help from legal on that one, for the remaining 20%, if they choose not to, they chose not to be part of the petition to vacate, so they're fronting property, that 20%. Do they have a right of refusal to not purchase that? And that maintain as city right-of-way? I will have to check on that if...
Yeah, I, I would recommend that we get back to, my initial impression is that if somebody is benefiting as a result of an appropriate process, even if they weren't part of the majority, they would be billed in the same way anyone else would. That's my initial impression, but we will loop back to make sure that we've properly vetted that question.
Very good. Any other questions? Well, very good. Thank you, Mr. Ott.
Thank you.
Again, this is the date set for the public hearing to consider the vacation of that section of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest, as depicted on the screen just moments ago. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, our city clerk, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or by email to B.Schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the city council electronically, and for purposes of establishing the record during this public hearing, a clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance. Madam Clerk.
There were two submissions in advance. Those were from Amos Brinkley and Jennifer Hines.
Thank you very much. As was the case with the general public comment section, testimony during this public hearing is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the topic at hand, which is the consideration of the vacation of that section of Klein Road between I-5 and Pacific Highway Southwest. Virtual testimony, again, is authorized here in Lakewood. If you'd like to provide virtual public testimony, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and join us in the Zoom room. If you'd like to be called upon, please use the raise the hand feature, and we will make sure to call upon you and make sure that we can hear you clearly. Please state your name of residence, name and residence, and then you'll have your three minutes for the public testimony. So at this point, I have a sign-in sheet for those who wish to provide testimony during the public hearing. The first is Jennifer Hines.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name's Jennifer Hines. I'm here representing Medicine Creek Enterprise Corporation and the Nisqually Indian Tribe. The Nisqually Indian Tribe owns a property directly abutting Klein Road, the Nisqually Markets and Fueling Station. We've owned that since 2012. It's being held in trust by the federal government. This vacation got fairly far down the process before Mr. Brinkley and Medicine Creek and the Nisqually Tribe were informed that it was happening. When your staff, thank goodness, informed the petitioners that they needed to let us know that, we did have several meetings and telephone conversations where we all were in agreement that what we really need to happen there is for it to be open as public right-of-way. We need the access. We have been working for well over a year on a redevelopment plan. We've talked a couple of times with your economic development team. We will be working with your planning department to redevelop the market area and improve all the access. We've grown since we bought in 2012, thank goodness, and we're doing quite well there. So we have a plan to redevelopment that area. That plan is dependent upon Klein Road being used as a right-of-way. I point out that I, I understand, and I did do, ran the groups in the city of Tacoma for almost 10 years that did street vacations. So the criteria, of course, that you look at when you're considering a street vacation, it includes whether the street or alley is no longer required for public use or public access. Not only do we require that for public use and public access, but the petitioner has stated several times, that is one of the purposes they need it for as well. It also says whether conditions may so change in the future to provide a greater use or need. We have a redevelopment plan. We are, we have already put quite a bit of time and money into this. We have designs. So we, this is something that we hope to have accomplished in the next year. And then third, whether the objections are made by owners of private property abutting the street, which they are, and also other governmental agencies. Again, we are a tribal nation corporate, and we would hope that the city council would open up those communications with the tribal nation prior to approving something that we are absolutely opposing. With that being said, we're happy to meet and have any discussions we need to have to, to answer any further questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Amos Brinkley was listed, but indicated he did not wish to speak, but you're certainly allowed and will be given the opportunity if you're here. If not, I'll turn to the next one on the list, which is Levita Lester Brinkley.
Hi, I'm Levita Lester Brinkley, and my husband and my family, we operate that business that is right there at the corner of Klein Road and Pacific Highway. We've been there for about 15 years. We are a small, family-owned business, and that Klein Road has been our access point. When customers visit, that is how they get there. We've, it's been that way for the entire 15 years that we've been there, back before the hotels were even there, back when it was like residential housing there. We have definitely had challenges when the city or whomever decided to gate the road off and it kind of created a space back there for people. We need that access to be an access point. We just need it to be a road again, and that's it. We're not looking to have it be vacated, but just be the access road that it was when we first started, and that is how people get to our business. To not have that would be a major blow to our business. That's all.
Thank you. Two others have their names down, but they indicated no, Elliot Standish and Angie Frutus. If you want to reconsider to provide testimony, you're certainly welcome to. So seeing none, I will then turn to those on, if you are addressing the Klein Road issue.
No, no, it is, actually, it is. I guess everybody knows me by now.
Well, you still got to state your name for the record.
I didn't know about this vacation, but when I look at it, I can see that the city can get fed about maybe $95,000 from it. But when I look at the map, and I didn't know, I can see that there are some private roads that go to the hotel and... that go to the hotel and other businesses. Well, maybe those could be vacated and this one could be kept. If, if somebody want to vacant a road rather than having a road which is much wider and more accessible and others have a business over there already, you know, it's a matter of respect. It's been, I can hear 15 years to build their business. It's really wrong after 15 years to say, well, you don't count. We don't care that the taxes you produce and the business that you did in this city. And well, if your business is no longer is going to be good, you're on your own. That's, that's not really right. I, I believe that that's, that road should stay. If they want to vacant, there is a road seemed like a smaller road that it goes to the hotel, that could be vacated and maybe the hotel could use this one rather. Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll turn to any of those who are appearing via Zoom to provide testimony during this public hearing. Are there any hands raised to provide testimony during the public hearing on the hearing to consider the vacation of that section of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest? Are there any other individuals wishing to provide testimony on the public hearing to consider the vacation of Klein Road lying between I-5 and Pacific Highway Southwest?
There are no other attendees on Zoom raising their hand.
Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll now turn to, looks as if there's no unfinished business, so we'll turn to new business. Madam Clerk.
New business, motion number 2024-70, motion providing guidance to the Planning Commission related to multifamily tax exemption, MFTE residential target area, RTA.
Thank you. And first, we'll have an overview by our economic development manager, Ms. Newton, and just we're clarifying, Ms. Newton, that tonight it's not an action item other than a motion to potentially authorize the council to guide the Planning Commission to certain areas by which or for which they may consider the MFTE residential target area in Lakewood.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. Thank you. Yes, this is a motion regarding the multifamily tax exemption residential target area. And this direction is to Planning Commission, as you had mentioned. It's providing guidance related to the MFTE RTA. And there's just two items of direction that we are recommending that you approve moving forward to the Planning Commission. And that is, City Council is in favor of considering residential target area expansion in the Central Business District and Springbrook areas, as well as consideration to add residential target areas in the Oak Brook and Telecom areas. And the second item is the council is in favor of amending Lakewood Municipal Code 3.64.02G to allow for a 12-year multifamily tax exemption extension in the Central Business District outside of the tax increment finance area. So then this is just guidance that then would be the next step to go to the Planning Commission for a complete review, including a public hearing.
So a quick clarifying question based on some public comment. So the Central Business District, as we saw depicted during the study session last week, the, the only area that is not currently in the residential target area of the Central Business District is that area to the south and east on Gravely Lake Drive. Is that correct?
Within the Central Business District. Yes, yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Because the rest of the Central Business District, including many of the vacant parcels on the north side of Gravely are already in the MFTE RTA target area.
That's correct. The residential target area doesn't, is not exactly a match for the Central Business District. And this one recommendation among many suggestions is for that corridor that you had mentioned.
Okay, very good. Any questions of Ms. Newton before we take consideration of the motion? Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for the presentation. So we already have the multifamily tax exemption in place, correct, in this city?
That's correct, Councilmember.
And where right now is it, where are you, if you build somewhere, where, where are you eligible to use the multifamily tax exemption?
So currently.
And I know the boundaries are a little bit squirrely, so do your best.
Yes, so currently within the Central Business District, so the majority of the Central Business District. And then the residential target area that we call the Central Business District also includes an extension to the north and east. So which, whereas some areas that already have developments, so we call that the Central Business District residential target area. And then it's also allowed in a majority of the Lakewood Station District sub-area. It does not include the I-5 side of PAC Highway within the Lakewood Station District, but most of the rest of it. And then also a small area within Springbrook. And that would include where the Wellstone Apartments are, which was a multifamily tax exemption project in that area of town and also across the street, a small area off of Bridgeport on the other side.
Okay, and then how, off the top of your head, we just approved one the other night in the Lakewood Station District. How many, in the time that the city of Lakewood has had this, which you can tell us the year the city of Lakewood implemented the multifamily tax exemption, about how many times, and I'm not going to hold you to penalty of perjury here, approximately how many times have we used this?
We have approximately 600, well, there's 614 that units that were approved prior to this year. And then in terms of number of projects, off of memory, eight to 10 perhaps, probably more like eight. And, and then the multifamily tax exemption program, again, off of memory, I believe it was around 2006 when it was implemented. Yes.
And explain, there's an eight, 10, and 12?
Correct, yes, Councilmember. So when we, when Lakewood first implemented the program, there was a 10-year option and as well as the eight-year. So eight and 10-year, I believe, or maybe it was just 10. I'd have to look back, but there wasn't a 10-year for sure. And then the multifamily tax exemption program was updated by the state and it currently allows for an eight-year, which is a fully market rate project, if you will. And then, which we typically have used, it's been a real economic development tool for the market rate development. But it also allows for a 12-year exemption if the developer or property owner includes at least 20% affordable.
And has that been used to date?
It has, Councilmember, but very few, I think maybe two projects.
The big project in there that gets you to 614 was Echelon, correct? It was done in the mid to early first decade of the 2000s. Is that? Okay, and, and explain to us what's tax exempt and what's not?
What is and what's not?
Yeah.
So tax exemption is on either the portion of rehabilitation or new residential units that are built within the residential target areas. It does not include existing improved structures or land.
Or the land. So the land is still taxed at the full market value as per state law?
Yes, that's correct.
And then at the point in time, it eventually just, it rolls off. So what this has always been is, is a tool that the cities use around the state to try to incentivize the building of housing. And why would we do that?
That's correct. So we try to incentivize building in target areas that we think that we need housing and that would serve the community the best. And so we try to direct that housing and incentivize it so to encourage development in those areas within the city. And, and so that is, and also to encourage folks to come and develop here in Lakewood. And because developers have lots of options in the market for development.
So I think we've seen lots of articles, Tacoma's used it a lot for some really great projects. Hasn't always, in my personal opinion, hasn't worked as well as we had hoped that it would in some cases here. Are there other cities in Pierce County that use the multifamily tax exemption besides us in Tacoma that you know of?
Yes, Mayor, there are several jurisdictions within Pierce County that uses the multifamily tax exemption. Yes.
And around the state, a lot of folks use them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's of the, well, I'd have to, I don't have it in front of me, but there's several eligible cities within the state and maybe half that take advantage of the multifamily tax exemption opportunity.
And why are we being asked to consider, and we're asking the Planning Commission to consider a 12-year extension? And what would that extension, so if I did an eight, I wouldn't be eligible? Or a 10, I wouldn't be eligible because I don't have any low-income housing, correct?
Well, as it stands, so you don't, there aren't currently, so that's, what we're saying is that within the Central Business District, City Council is recommending that outside of the tax increment finance area to allow for eight, 10, or 12-year. And so the eight and 12 are because that is currently part of our program. And then we included the 10-year because we have projects that are already, have been built that have taken advantage of the 10-year exemption. So therefore they could, could apply for the extension.
Okay, thank you.
And then future projects within the Central Business District going forward could then apply for that extension as well.
Thank you. I had a question, kind of a follow-up about the the proposed consideration of the extension, the Central Business District. Are those areas that are subject to the Planning Commission's review, are they also subject to the existing transportation impact fee or not?
Repeat that question? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sure. With the areas that we're looking to consider for the RTA expansion,
Oh.
are they also at least subject to the existing transportation impact fee in the Central Business District?
Yes, Mayor, that would be within the Central Businesses District, so yes.
So in other words, the council's already provided a tool by which developers of new product, whether it's housing or commercial, are going to participate in paying for transportation impacts?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, very good. Yes, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on Mr. Bokey's questions, so make sure I understand this. It's eight percent or eight years at market rate, 12 years if it's 20% affordable. Is 10 years at market rate or how does that, because the 10-year option, right?
Was, I believe that was market rate. Yes, it would have had to have been because we, yes, correct, market rate.
Okay, so going forward, are there those three options still?
There, there's the three options of those projects to apply for the 12-year. The caveat is that they must, in the 12-year extension, that period of time, they must set aside 20% to affordable units.
Got it. So it's a 12-year extension to an existing?
Yes, existing project, if it, let's say, for example, it's eight years. If they want to extend for 12 years, they must set aside that 20% for, to get that 12-year extension.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt motion 2024-70? Thank you. It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bokey. May we adopt motion 2024-70? And again, just for clarification, this is simply a motion, if passed, that provides guidance from the council to the Planning Commission related to the multifamily tax exemption residential target area within the city. It doesn't adopt anything tonight. It just sends it to the Planning Commission for further consideration and an additional public hearing, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of motion 2024-70 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has been adopted. That concludes the items on our regular agenda. We now have reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Well, thank you, Mayor Whalen, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to call upon our police chief, Patrick Smith, to give you an update on two items. The first is our third quarter police department report, and then secondly, a proposed interlocal agreement with Pierce County Sheriff's Office regarding specialized services. With that, Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Today I wanted to just go over the third quarter stats for the police department. As you can see here, our calls for service have come down by approximately 10% from 2023. Usually about this time, the number of calls for service tend to reduce just a little bit. We show a 10% reduction overall in the calls for service. The number of arrests for the police department are up about 12%, primarily dealing with gross misdemeanors. Our misdemeanor arrests are also up, in addition to our warrant arrests are up 17.7%. The only area that we show reduction in overall arrest would be in felony arrests. Our crimes against person is down 0.7%. This has been a critical area for us. As you know, we have our Western State Hospital here that accounts for a number of our aggravated assaults. And even in that area, we show a reduction of 8%, but our simple assaults are up 8.7%. Overall, our homicides are down 40% at this time, in addition to robberies being down 32% and our sex crimes are down 23.4%.
Quick question for you, Chief. On the aggravated assault numbers, do we have data that shows how many of those are attributed to Western State as opposed to elsewhere within the city?
No, they're not broken down by location or service provider. However, we just show them as aggravated assaults and simple assaults, but no distinguishing identifiers for them.
That is something that we could probably dig into and get at some point if we needed to? I assume.
Yes, sir.
We're tracking those? Okay.
Our property crimes is one of the areas that we've been working incredibly hard on. We're down 28.6%. Our burglaries are down 18.9%. Our most significant area is our motor vehicle theft, which is down 67.5%. Our property theft, 23%, vandalism, 33, down 33.7%. And our weapons law violations are down 25%. The most critical area where we saw a 40% overall. The most critical area where we saw a 40% overall increase last year about this time in stolen vehicles, thankful to you guys for helping us in getting the FLOC system. We're now sitting at 67.5% reduction. I'll go over that just a little bit deeper later. Overall, as you know, the laws were changed as it relates to our pursuits. So, we're slowly coming back into alignment of where we were previously. However, while we are showing a reduction overall in our eludes, we do have an increase in the number of pursuits that we had during this timeframe, but it's just a balancing out of the process. Most of the pursuits that we had during this timeframe, most of them were terminated by a supervisor or terminated by the officer who initially started the pursuit. In this shots fired, anytime we have shots fired, even though it's not necessarily a category, we have shots fired, we're down 16.8% overall, showing a reduction from 2022, 2023, and also another reduction in 2024, as we continue to work throughout the community to address quality of life issues within the community. This shows a graph of our motor vehicle theft, which I mentioned earlier. So far this year, you can see a steady trend of them going down overall for the most part, but we're still down significantly in motor vehicle theft. Our traffic collisions, somewhat balanced, showing down 2% from previously. It's one of the areas we've been working on as well, doing several emphasis within the community to reduce speeding throughout the community and also address ongoing speed complaints within the community. And this is an overall summary of our crime and crime picture. So far, everything is looking good this year and going in the right direction as far as most of our crimes are sitting. If you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Any questions, Mr. Bokey?
Hey, Chief, thank you very much. Good job to you and your department and for the continual improvements you guys are making and making us all safer. Just some questions about the arrests. Felonies are down, felonies are the big guys, you know, that's the ones that send people off to prison. Gross misdemeanors up a little, misdemeanors up. Do you have some kind of breakout in what's going on underneath those numbers?
You know, for the most part, we're, to me, it shows that we're addressing crime and we're arresting the right people. Certain crimes fall into various categories, and if you would recognize that one of the biggest changes in the whole process and in changes in our numbers is primarily in the laws. As our laws have changed and they have lowered crimes from felony to misdemeanor, then you're going to make less felony arrests because that's now a gross misdemeanor. And it balances out in the gross misdemeanor part where you'll see that's up 42%. However, the change in the tag of what is previously a felony now to a misdemeanor, and then it just adjusts with the numbers that we have.
Okay, yeah, and that makes a lot of sense. You're making a lot of drug arrests. We made, but gross misdemeanor for some drug things that, exactly to your point, we, things used to be felonies are now gross misdemeanors, and we take on that responsibility. Are you making a lot of drug arrests?
We are making some drug arrests, but not as much as before because, as you will recall, with the changes in the law, even items that were felonies now are down either misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, or it ends up being, results in a warrant for their arrest because they don't show up for court when they're supposed to. And so, hence the increase of all other crimes below that of felony.
And does that explain the increase in warrants? Are you, is that an indication that you're able to go out and pursue warrants?
Well, not necessarily. One of the things that we do as it relates to our warrants is we have a sergeant that works over in the court, and when individuals fail to show up for court, our officers are notified that a warrant is out for the following person or persons. And we make it an effort to go out and follow up to make sure that we're making the appropriate arrest and holding people accountable.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Any else, Chief, on this part of it?
Yes. Yes, one of the things that I wanted to point out and to, okay, just show counsel is, just recently, at International Association of Police, Chiefs of Police, did a profile of the City of Lakewood for some of the changes the Police Department had made and some of the things that we were doing within the community. This is the video that they made about our department that showed at IACP this year that highlights the actions of our officers, the changes that we've made that have had a significant impact on crime, and also changes that we've made to try to affect the quality of life within the community. This video was shown repeatedly throughout IACP and the various hotels, in addition to the reception hall, and sent out to its over 1 million members to showcase Lakewood. And so, I'll show you the. The goals for our department is primarily to reduce crime for the citizens in our city so that we can address all the areas of crime, address our business communities, and also create a thriving environment for our schools as well as our neighborhoods and communities as a whole. Last year, we saw our stolen vehicle crimes go up approximately 40%. We knew that we had to take some significant action to reduce crime just from using the FLOC system as well as our retail theft emphasis. Stolen vehicles are down 67%, our homicides are down 50%, robberies are down 22%. We've seen just decrease after decrease. The only area that we saw an uptick was in our retail theft. Why? Because we're making more arrests.
And then, do you have, like, footage of where he actually struck you?
The retail theft emphasis is something we started about five, six years ago. We've now rolled it out where we do it almost on a monthly basis. We work in cooperation with our retailers. We set up officers inside the stores with their surveillance systems and their asset protection personnel, along with outside undercover and marked units. And we monitor the shoplifts as they take place, and then we arrest on sight as they exit the stores.
The City of Lakewood and the police officers here have a good relationship with most of the retailers within the city. They let us know of trends that are going on. We're able to run numbers ourselves, and then we can really focus our efforts, especially if we're looking at different days of the week they're having issues or different times of the day, and really cater to the things that they're seeing.
Being proactive gives us the upper hand in a way that we can address the problem immediately. We can be ahead of the problem. This kind of crime affects everybody. It affects the consumer, has to pay higher prices. It affects the businesses that are trying to make a profit and run a business. The effects go wide and far, and we also find that people that are involved in these types of crimes are often involved in other types of crimes. So, for us, it really is a priority to make sure that we are able to curtail that.
What Lakewood has done has really set a standard for other law enforcement agencies to understand how they can work with us and how we can work with them. Now, law enforcement's actually showing up. It's telling the community that it's not a free-for-all, that law enforcement cares, retail cares, and it's great even to see our customers, they care. And they're high-fiving us as people are getting stopped and feeling like we're taking back the community, cleaning it up.
What you're seeing here is an alert for our FLOC system. It's coming up and telling me that on our camera on 84th Street, eastbound from 84th, that we have our vehicle that we are looking for, it's being driven eastbound, so it's driven out of the city. So, we'll go pay attention to and see if it comes back into our city.
FLOC Safety is a license plate reader system that the City of Lakewood deployed about a year ago. We currently have 36 cameras strategically deployed in the city, and we're expecting another 16 in the next month or so.
And Lakewood 12, you available to assist me on this?
The system operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it takes images of cars passing by, and then it compares the image of the license plate to data that is already available through the National Crime Information System.
I think our vehicle just passed us. We're going to make a stop over here.
We have seen a notable decrease in the number of vehicles stolen in the City of Lakewood, and at the same time, seen an increase in the number of vehicles that we are recovering as a result of this system.
Eastern entrance to the cemetery, high-risk stop in progress. All right, driver! I want you to exit the vehicle with your hands in the air. To me, walk back slowly. Keep walking back. Anyone else in the car, ma'am? Okay.
There's also a very robust search tool built into the system that allows us to go back over the last 30 days and use it as an investigative tool. It also allows for sharing of data around the country with all FLOC agencies.
Car's clear.
There's no higher priority in Lakewood than the safety of the community because everything that we do, whether it's economic development, parks, infrastructure improvements, the many community events that we have, are not going to be successful unless we have a safe community. LPD has always been on the cutting edge of things and bringing creativity and ingenuity to the table. The public here, the residents, the businesses are extremely supportive of LPD. The level of respect that they have for our officers is second to none, and I'll just say that our officers are some of the finest in the world.
Looking at our crime numbers, most of the crime that we have within the city is resolvable. We want to implement more technology within our department to make sure that we are always being on the innovative side, addressing crime when it happens. We want to be innovative. We want to be in front of things, but we also want to create an environment that is comfortable for people to live their daily lives without hindrance. So, as I said, this is what was shown at IACP, highlighting the actions of our officers. And I tell you, I can't thank our officers who work out in the streets on a daily basis enough for all the effort that they put into making sure that the community is safe. Each citizen is represented in the way that they expect, and the officers are respectful to the citizens that we have. So, I'm very proud of each officer and their ability to get out there and make things happen for the city.
Well, we likewise are very proud of the department under your leadership and all the leadership of your commanders here. It's just been wonderful to see the impact of technology as well as the manpower taking a bite out of crime, so to speak. So, it's really been really great work. My question is, what can we do to help more, right? We talked a little bit about a technology called Axis, I believe, or?
Yes.
I forget the name of it, but we talked a little bit about, yeah.
FUSIS.
Could that help if we had some funding? Do you think that might be an additional tool in the toolbox?
Absolutely. That would be our next step. The whole idea behind us moving forward, FUSIS technology, is first you have to first build a base, and that's exactly what we're doing with the FLOC system, the increase in technology with our Axon technology, and then the next step for us in building that background would be going to a FUSIS model that would give us real-time information. We'd be able to view it, view things when it's happening, and also, officers would have information right there on their phone immediately as things are going on. And so, that's certainly the direction that we would like to go.
Well, I for one, once the council gets educated about it, I for one would be very interested in learning more and helping as best I can to support the additional investment to the extent we can.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any questions of members of council or comments? Fantastic video, great recruiting tool. It's fortunate, but unfortunate, you're already fully staffed, but this is a helpful tool for sure.
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Chief, thank you for everything, and thank you, officers, for all your good work, and it's great to see we have so many telegenic officers on the Lakewood Police Department. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Any else, Mr. Caulfield, on that?
We're the next item up as well.
Oh, please. Ah, we do have the next item, which is the review of the interlocal agreement between Pierce County and Lakewood for the provision of specialized law enforcement services. So, this is next up. Chief?
Yes, so, what you have before you is essentially the interlocal agreement with the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. This is a refresh of the one prior for us. The interlocal agreement is because we're essentially not a contract agency, meaning we don't contract with the Sheriff's Department to come in and provide service for us. We have our own Police Department. But essentially, what this is, is if something significant were to happen in the city, or we had two major incidences going at one time, and we had to call in the Sheriff's Department for essential help of additional officers, what this is saying is, there are two options on there, particularly on page four. It gives a per capita cost if we were to contract with the Sheriff's Department, which we are not doing. But the second part is kind of like a per incident model. And so, the entire agreement is more like a buffet, a cafeteria-style contract saying you can use one item or you can use multiple items on there, and all it is, is a breakdown in total cost. Over the past few years, we have not incurred any costs because we've not had a need for the Sheriff's Department to come within the city limits of Lakewood to provide any additional services. And so, this essentially is just a refresh of an old contract.
Very good. So, in terms of the cost structure, do we have any sort of estimates on what the per capita might run us?
Well, the thing is, unless you're replacing your Police Department, then we don't really need a per capita cost. And the only time that we would incur cost is if we use any of their services. If, say, you had a bomb blast or something significant within the city, and you had to call them in to provide either some type of detection or additional personnel, or to reduce something, do something that's larger than the Police Department could handle. And so far, you know, fortunately, and I'll knock on wood, that that hasn't happened, and we hope to continue to move in that direction. But as you were mentioning, the per capita cost is something that we would be paying them annually versus a per incident cost.
Very good. Any questions? Mr. Caulfield, do you have anything else on that or no?
I would just echo the Chief's comments here that, you know, this is something that we've had in place before, but the Sheriff's Department is reaching out to all cities and towns and doing essentially a refresh. And again, I concur with the Chief's recommendation here that, you know, the services that we need actually don't come at a cost because it's a regional. I would describe this as basically insurance for the community in the event that we need that additional assistance. So, and it is recommended that this ILA come forward for your consideration as part of your next regular meeting as well. I know the county is trying to get these all wrapped up by the end of the year so that they all go into effect countywide on January 1st, 2025.
Two, other than the county, remind me, who else is going to be part of the ILA?
Every city and town.
Every city and town.
Pierce County.
And they're all WCIA-covered, I assume, most all of them?
Not all of them, Mayor.
County self-insured, I know that.
County self-insured, Tacoma self-insured. Some of the smaller cities are going to be part of a different consortium. Some of the smaller cities are going to be part of a different consortium, such as Association of Washington Cities, and then the medium-sized cities such as Lakewood, Puyallup, Sumner, Bonny Lake, Stillicum, Dupont are all part of WCIA.
Any questions? Does this have additional strength perhaps that the prior iteration didn't from a legal indemnity standpoint, or is it a refresh?
As a clarification, this is not an ongoing, Pierce County is going to be doing things for us for the next two years under this contract. This is exactly as the chief said, if there were to be some kind of a SWAT call-out, instead of sorting it out later, trying to figure out what the cost of that assistance was, we will now know upfront. As far as the indemnification, this isn't as much like a consortium, which is what you're used to in some of our prior agreements. This is more like a contract for services. When we need those services, we ask them to provide them. And so the indemnification goes a little bit more like a true contract relationship rather than a cooperative where we're trying to sort it out later.
Yeah, this is strictly between the county and the city.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is better, I think, in the long run.
Well, as the chief has pointed out, and he has said this a couple times with different things that he's brought forward, he is really kind of rightsizing and maximizing the resources that we have, given the size city we are, and looking at where we would need and do best getting that occasional help from a larger agency. And he's really kind of drilled down for this particular contract. I think that's the way I read it anyway.
No, that helps. Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Well, this will be set for consideration by the council on the next regular meeting?
Yes, mayor.
Okay.
November four.
Great. Anything else, chief, on that?
No, sir. Thank you.
Good work. We appreciate that. It's always good to find the best way to leverage our resources for the benefit of the residents, so thank you for that. Mr. Caulfield, anything else?
I do, I have a few more items, if that's okay with the mayor and council.
Well, I would be shocked if you didn't, so go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. First off, I think as we all know, there's been some pretty significant natural disasters in other parts of the United States, and one in particular in North Carolina. And three of our employees recently deployed as a statewide emergency operations team to provide some assistance, specifically in Yancey County, North Carolina, which was really quite devastated by a recent hurricane. And I'd just like to call out and recognize those employees. The first is our Assistant Police Chief, John Unford, followed by Sergeant Andy Suver, and our Recreation Coordinator, Elizabeth Scheid. And quite frankly, we heard back that, you know, what they did down there in terms of helping that community was exemplary and second to none. Our Assistant Police Chief, who I would consider one of the best experts that I've ever had the chance to work with in emergency management, he served as a liaison and worked with the community on donations and management of volunteers and really just getting the community back on its feet. Sergeant Suver played an instrumental role in operations, which is the direct response to the hurricane and managing all of the personnel and made sure that, you know, things were being done, for example, cleanup and things like that. And then our Recreation Coordinator, Elizabeth Scheid, who again is somebody who has really stepped up to the plate outside of her day job as it relates to emergency management. She was key in working in logistics and setting up comfort stations for those that really just, quite frankly, needed a roof over their head and a warm bed. And all of them, they were down there for several weeks and just did an outstanding job, not just representing LPD and the city and our state, but of course, themselves and their own families. And again, I just wanted to call that out and thank them for that. And they did return home late, late on Sunday, so again, just wanted to share that with you. Also, you know, every year, our employees, we participate in the Tacoma-Pierce County United Way Campaign, which is a big fundraising event, and our employees give willingly in support of that. So we kicked off this year's annual campaign this past Friday, and it'll run through November first. We're going to have a series of opportunities just to have some fun and also, again, to kind of pass the bucket, if you will, to raise some money for those, you know, most in our need in our community and in Pierce County. Matter of fact, during one of the lunch hours later this week, we're going to have a big chili cook-off, and again, another opportunity to try and raise some funds for United Way. Also, I know I had reported a couple of weeks ago that the Springbrook Connections Group wished to have a Desserts on the Driveway event with the council, and I know after some back and forth and checking all of your calendars and your schedules, we did land on Wednesday, November thirteenth, and that'll be over in the Springbrook neighborhood at Springbrook Connections, and I believe the start time is six PM on that. Also, we had been trying to set some time with your state legislators from the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth district, and based on council's calendar, we had identified December fifth and December eleventh. However, you know, we have six state legislators. Unfortunately, those two dates, they just have a very full calendar as they're leading up to the beginning of the session in January. Unfortunately, those dates didn't work for them, or a majority of them. It was one, we had one or two, and another, we had two, but, you know, not three or four or even, you know, six. So the recommendation is, and mayor, I'd appreciate, you know, council's consensus on this this evening, would be rather than doing those meetings in December, to do them in January and do it as part of a breakfast meeting, and our government lobbyist team was more than happy to host that at their offices down in Olympia, and it would be seven to eight in the morning. And we've identified three dates right now that would work well on the other end, which are Thursday, January sixteenth, Friday, January seventeenth, and Wednesday, January twenty-second. And again, mayor, if this worked for the council, we would then narrow that day down. The other option is to do a lunch meeting. My recommendation would not be to do that because what happens is they're out and about doing their work, or if they're in committee meetings, it might be difficult for them to get to a noon lunch meeting with you, hence a breakfast meeting at seven AM because they don't kick off until eight AM in the morning is when their committee meetings and alike begin. So mayor, I'd appreciate again, some consensus or direction on that as you talk about it and maybe bring it up under council comments.
Great.
Also, the other thing that we would appreciate some direction on would be the Lakewood Connections Magazine for fourth quarter, we're in the process of developing that, and we have identified, you know, based on some previous conversations with the council, a couple of ideas for the council corner. One would be a wrap-up of everything that you folks have accomplished, looking back the last twelve months, and identifying the top three to five items. Or the other option would be your council goals. I would say that the first option, I think, would be, I think it may be, I don't know what the term is, but?
Year in review.
Yeah. In terms of what you actually accomplished, and as far as looking out into two thousand twenty-five, I think that's something we could do, you know, in the early part of that year. But again, I would look for some council direction on which of those articles you would like us to move forward on. There's a number of transportation and parks projects that are moving forward, and just real quick, Stillicum Boulevard, Weller to Eighty-seventh, which is essentially about the entrance to Fort Stillicum Park, that project is currently out to bid. Bids are due later this week. We hope to be able to bring back a contract for your consideration sometime in November. Likewise, a major overlay project on South Tacoma Way between Ninety-sixth and Stillicum Boulevard is also out to bid, expected to be, bids close next week, as a matter of fact, and likewise, bringing back a contract for your consideration sometime in November. Another major project, and this is one that Congresswoman Strickland is paying very close attention to since she provided a good bulk of the funding to help this, is the last segment of South Tacoma Way, not just in Lakewood, but also in Tacoma between Eightieth and Eightieth. And we expect to bid that out, the latter part of this month, early November, and then we hope to be able to bring back a contract for your consideration sometime in December. We also have a traffic signal project, which is funded with a state TIB grant at South Tacoma Way and Ninety-second. We expect to advertise that in the next four to six weeks, and again, to be able to bring back something for your consideration, hopefully by the end of the year or early January. And then another one is sidewalk and street improvement projects, Idlewild and One Twelfth, as well as interlock into Idlewild, and we expect to advertise that in the January timeframe, and then having that contract come back for your consideration, hopefully in early February or so. And then we have a sewer project over in the Stillicum neighborhood, and we expect to advertise for that in December, again, with council consideration in January of twenty-five. So those are the projects that are moving forward for construction, and then we're also finishing up a number of projects on the design that we will then be coming back to you in second and third quarter for construction in twenty-five as well. So more to follow on that.
That would include Nyanza, I assume?
There's a number, yeah, there's about six or seven of them there. That's correct. And Nyanza is one of them. That's correct.
Yeah.
And then on the parks improvement side, we continue to work with the Nisqually Indian Tribe on our partnership project down at Fort Stillicum Park. That is actually at sixty percent design, and we're expected that that will get under construction sometime in two thousand twenty-five with the goal to be finished by the end of two thousand twenty-five. Another Fort Stillicum Park project is some ADA parking improvements and some overflow. We expect to bid that out by the end of the year and begin, actually to bid out, to get the RFP, to get the design work underway by the end of the year, design in the early part of twenty-five, and then begin permitting and construction by mid-two thousand twenty-five. Our park sign replacement project, as well as our electronic message board project, continues to move forward, so we expect to bid that out in both of those projects in the early two thousand twenty-five, and then we have, expect to have both of those projects completed by the middle part of two thousand twenty-five. Right now, we're in design and permitting on both of those. A very large project, Ward's Lake Park, is at a hundred percent design, and we're in the process of waiting on final permitting, primarily from the state, and we expect to bid that out next week or the week after, and then hopefully council consideration by the end of the year, perhaps as early as your December second meeting. And again, that's about a four and a half, five million dollar project. Couple of smaller neighborhood improvement projects are moving forward. The first is Oak Brook Park improvements, particularly a park shelter and some other improvements over there, and we expect to have that done in late, about March or April of two thousand twenty-five. And the same with Primley Park, some improvements over in that neighborhood. We've been working with those neighbors, and we expect completion on that project sometime in April or May of twenty-five as well. Also associated with Ward's Lake Park, there will be a new gateway monument sign at Eighty-fourth, and Ward's Lake Park is as drivers come into the city from Tacoma into Lakewood. And then I know council's aware, we did receive a state grant to build some pickleball courts down at Harry Todd Park, and that project is actually at ninety percent design, and so permitting is beginning on that, and we expect bidding to, on the project to occur in early twenty-five, and then the project to be completed around May or June of twenty-five as well. So those are some of the main park projects that are currently in the queue right now, and then we'll begin to transition to essentially the next five to ten projects in the early part of twenty-five. And then as it relates to your calendar, tomorrow evening, mayor, you have your coffee house at the Fort Stillicum Pavilion, and our new Planning and Public Works Director, Jeff Remack, will be having a discussion on kind of the consolidation of our two departments there, what was formerly Community and Economic Development and Public Works Engineering. November seventh is your SSMCP Elected Officials Council meeting over at Eagles Pride Golf Course, and that'll be from eight AM to ten AM. And then the second weekend in November, on Saturday, the ninth, and Sunday, the tenth, we'll have our Fall Community Cleanup in partnership with Waste Connections over at their transfer station off of Ninety-fourth. And, you know, council, we're always looking for volunteers, so if you want to come down and help out, you're certainly more than welcome, welcome to do that. As I was also previously mentioned, on November twelfth, United Way is having their annual Poverty to Possibility Summit in downtown Tacoma. That is an eight AM to noon event. However, if you do have the time to be able to attend either all of that or a portion of that, I would strongly recommend it. Donna Penapinto, her and her team, she's the president and CEO of United Way, they always do a great job with this event, and it's a bit of an eye-opener in terms of the need that exists within our county. And then lastly, I mentioned Desserts on the Driveway on November thirteenth, and yes, that is at six PM. So with that, mayor, that's my report.
Any questions, Mr. Caulfield? So the legislator meetings, right? We wanted to kind of revisit that real quickly during council comments. So, I mean, I would be fine with going down for some sort of a breakfast meeting if we can get some others to do it. We can also just not worry about having a quote-unquote "large" council legislature meeting and just meet with them during our city days. I mean, that's a possibility, too. I don't see the legislative ask this year as specific, but for the Western State Partnership Project, I mean, do you think it would be helpful to go down there early on?
I would highly recommend that you get down there in January, mayor, because that's when really, quite frankly, all the bills get dropped, and we want to make sure, you know, that's also the purpose of trying to meet in December as well, to make sure that they're clear on what our priorities are. I'm afraid if we were to wait till February, we might miss something. I'm not saying that would happen, I would just be a little cautious on that.
I assume we'll send them out well in advance. They got them, and they usually read them pretty thoroughly, and then I get calls and emails from some of them, so that would be good. Just a question for you, maybe to chat with Mr. Ott about. So on the proposed vacation, one wonders if there's an opportunity to do something other than a hundred percent of Klein, whether you could go down to the property boundary, if you will, of the store and the Nisqually shop, and that way would still give the back significant eighty percent, seventy percent portion to the abutting hotel owners that could be used for parking, so you could have a little bit of access off of Pac Highway. It wouldn't impact the owners and yet have significant extra land for parking for the two applicants. Just wondering.
I don't know, mayor, we can pass that on.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, because it would be different if they were in the middle of the block as opposed to a budding Pac Highway, but it's worth looking at. Seems like it's a possible win-win. Okay, then if there are no other questions for Mr. Caulfield, let's go to, was there another item you wanted me to discuss first, other than the ledge meeting? Any else, Mr. Caulfield? Just ledge meeting there? Okay.
So just what do you want to do on the legislative meetings and then the council corner?
Oh, council corner, I think a year, I'm thinking a year in review with a forward focus just on the four priorities we've already articulated. Maybe something as simple as that. What do you, what say you, council members?
Yeah, I'd say a year in review, and then first quarter, we look at the year ahead.
Yep. Okay. Ms. Bell?
Yes, I agree. I think a year in review, and then if you want to summarize at the very end a little bit towards, about the budget, like you mentioned, you know, forward thinking, and I think that was also something that I think Councilmember Branstadter was talking about.
Kind of priorities in review going forward. Yeah.
But I love a recap or a report card, in essence.
Because it's significant. I mean, we've accomplished a lot in two thousand twenty-four, for sure. Some people would say never enough, but we've accomplished quite a bit. So, all right, let's turn to council comments, and Councilmember Bokey, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. PCRC meeting, we had a rather long discussion surrounding the legislative agenda for PCRC, and the, our lobbyist Bryn Brady was taking notes and kept getting things added to it. I mean, the mayor was also on the call, so nothing earth-shattering, I don't think, in any of the, in any of the asks. So the one time I spoke up was in favor of, the town of Stillicum had mentioned that they were in support of the I-5 Nisqually project, and then I spoke up and I said, we are also in favor, this is something that we've supported the tribe on really for some time, and it is important to us and to JBLM also that this project get done. So, but I, you know, I just don't know how much money is going to be available, honestly, when they sit down. I'm hearing different things about the financial situation, so. When that, when they sit down, I'm hearing different things about the financial situation, so it's hard to tell. I am looking forward to the the Emergency Food Network fundraisers this weekend. And so I'll be attending that. At least that's my plan right now. It's Saturday evening at the Gavick Center. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back. Thanks to the rest of council for covering last week. And we had a couple of sessions that had some some good content in them. It was nice to look back at those and and hear everything that was said, so I appreciate that. In regards to tonight's meeting, I appreciate that Troop 53 came out, sort of my alma mater, right? I was I was once one of those kids in in the back row. And scouting helped kind of keep me out of trouble as a kid because I was I was a bit of a troublemaker. One of the other topics that was brought up is, you know, we we are here to represent our community and protect our community, and talking about balancing safety and tree preservation, right? If you've tried to walk or jog along Interlock in in that area that we're talking about putting sidewalks, those sidewalks are desperately needed. We had to put speed bumps in that area because cars move there pretty quick.
Very narrow.
And it's pretty narrow. And I was just looking at the Google Maps view of the trees there, and they've got the red dots on it, like the person mentioned. I think if we're trying to balance safety and tree preservation, I think safety wins in this case because we got to make it safe for our people to to move around there. With that said, that's why we have rules about putting more trees in, and that's that's what we'll do. In regards to the Klein Street vacation, I agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor, that I appreciate the input from the folks who came in today. Initially, I thought it was sort of cut and dry, and it made sense to do it. But it sort of feels more like, I think it's Ben Franklin has a quote about democracy being two wolves and a lamb arguing about what to have for dinner. So I want to make sure that they're not pushing out a smaller represented group and that they are protected as residents of the city, too. So it feels like there is an opportunity for compromise there, being that they're at the 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 end of that road. Maybe that maybe that vacation can be further back to enable them to still have their access to their property. I'd also be curious to know what work the Economic Development Department has done with the Nisqually tribe because it sounded like some background work had been done, but maybe that loop wasn't closed as this was coming forward. So that's an opportunity as well. In regards to the police report, excellent work by our officers. I really liked the video to see that our folks are being recognized nationally for the work they're doing. It's just a testament to how well our police department is run and how our city staff has has worked with them as well. So, yeah, other than that, I think I made my statement on the Connections magazine. So definitely a year in review. And the next year in January, we do the look ahead and looking forward to the Desserts on the Driveway on November 13th. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo a lot of the comments that have already been said. I agree with looking into the Klein Street vacation. I think that's a really good suggestion on that. It was wonderful to see the scouts here. That was very, very just cool to see. And then you were part of that, Councilmember Laura Sella, so that's very cool. And then I really appreciated the presentation on the MFTE and Councilmember Bokey's clarifying questions. I think that those were really good for people to hear and for us to review and go over and to really bring out and discuss. So I appreciate that. And then, of course, the public safety report was was excellent. I really like how we're leveraging technology. We're utilizing, like you like to say, every tool in our toolbox. And so I think that we're really very progressive in moving forward with our public safety. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally agree with the comments made in advance. And and it really means a lot to have our police officers do a video of that nature to show other municipalities how it can be done. So I think that's a great thing. I wanted to tell you guys, I forgot last week when I went to the school district, to the school meeting, that I did share with them, we appreciated the calendars that we received. So when you see them, you can just tell them thank you. I forgot to tell that last week. And I did have an opportunity to attend the groundbreaking at Western State Hospital.
Great.
Very well done. Met lots of the of the staff. They offered tours in the future if we would so desire. One comment that I had from one of the gentlemen, they didn't have the business cards, and I don't recall the names. So it was part of the executive team, that one concern that they had was throughout the process, if they have a cause to adjust something to go back to get a permit. And I didn't quite understand that process, that it takes so long because they go to the back of the line. So they were, so again, they were saying that if that happens, that their permit section would need it to be a little more upfront with the people that are already in the in the process. And I can, I can, that's the best I can explain it because I really didn't understand the process. So that was one of the things that, and that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Just brief comments on the reports tonight. Public safety report was excellent. It's wonderful to see the statistics trend in the right direction. As you have all commented, it's also gratifying to see that our technology investments and investments in people have been leveraged for, you know, good results for the benefit of the community. And the public safety video, you know, the testament and a wonderful exhibit of the professionalism exhibited daily by our officers on the streets. So I really appreciate that. I assume, Mr. Coffield, that'll get posted prominently somewhere on our website because I believe residents would love to see that. I think that's a nice, really nice piece. So. Speaking of public safety, as Councilmember Laura Sella indicated, safety can be enhanced, as we know, by environmental design. And good street lighting is one way to do it. Good sidewalk projects, as we know, is another way to do it. And I, too, strongly believe that that safety in some of these circumstances by way of better pedestrian access, which has been a goal of ours for a long time, has to trump sometimes over trees in the right of way. And we do what we can. I recall when we did the the project down, so when we just did the big one, starts with an H, Hipkins. My mind is at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock. It's fuzzy. The Hipkins project, I remember going down there physically, driving it and meeting with some of the project folks on site and discussing with them how much time and consideration they actually went through to save one of the two trees at issue that the commenter mentioned tonight. So they really work hard on doing the best they can to design around. But still, they have to design within the right of way. Otherwise, to buy other right of way increases the tax burden on on the public. And that's something we're trying to avoid as well. So I look forward to those projects getting done efficiently. And then this week, in terms of stuff going on, as Mr. Bokey indicated, we both attended the PCRC Pierce County Regional Council meeting. No action items. It was mostly informational. They, too, like us, went through their legislative agenda. It wasn't much more significant than what we have already done for our own city. Prior that day, I attended a Pierce Transit Service Delivery meeting. And as I indicated to you some time ago, they're working on better service delivery to our residents, including the residents of the Pierce Transit Service Delivery area, including the additional bus shelters, the new bus shelters, and looking how to enhance ridership along key routes. So more to follow on that. But they're doing a lot of self-reflection, trying to get much more public comment to get the public involved in where the dollars should be spent to enhance the ridership experience and to make sure that it gets more people from point A where they want to come from to where they want to go. So they're they're really working hard on that. I will be at the coffee house on Tuesday and look forward to that. And I will be attending the EFN event, an opportunity to donate more money on on Saturday. We all donate a lot, time and money. So those are my events for the week. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Coffield, we good?
So I just wasn't clear. So you're good with early January, a meeting with your state legislators?
Yep, yep, that's great. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Yeah, Thursday's better than Friday, just because from a traffic standpoint to Olympia. Yep. So, okay. If nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned. Thank you.